All right, thank you everyone for coming tonight to the workshop. We have Plan Commission, RDA, and council members all here tonight. So tonight, we're going to go over a little bit of presentation about the Sawdust District Master Plan. We've been working on this plan for about two years with an advisory committee. We've done a number of outreach steps. So now, we're getting ready to move forward with the formal adoption process. As part of that process, we wanted to have this joint workshop with a number of the boards in the council. After tonight, we would be planning to move this forward with the formal adoption. There we go. So just to talk a little bit about the plan, this plan kind of came out of the Imagine Oshkosh Plan. During the Imagine Oshkosh Plan, we had identified an area that we called the South Shore East. It's this area you see down here in the purple. With what's going on in the community since that original plan, for example, the Herd Arena, staff felt it was a good opportunity to do a little more in-depth plan for this area. And that's how we started down this process. So in large, it's the Fox River around the north, Lake Winnebago on the east, kind of that Main Street Nebraska area to the west, and 17th to the south. That was the original South Shore East as identified in the Imagine Oshkosh Plan. From there, we then moved on to the Sawdust District, beginning with those initial stakeholder meetings. Plaid document is broken up into a number of sections. Here, we're just kind of showing the general outline of the Sawdust District. As we met with the advisory board, the area grew a little bit more than what that original Imagine Oshkosh called for. On the northwest side, we expanded a little bit, and they did choose to expand it a little bit farther to the south as well, but we've got some other maps that kind of can show the exact context of the area. So one of the first things we did with those advisory group was work towards a mission statement. So the mission statement, it's rather lengthy. We went through a full meeting with the advisory board, developing this. This ultimately is what came out of those meetings. I'm not going to read the whole thing for you, but it is here, it is also in the plan. If you have any questions, concerns about that, please let us know. From there, we started to develop some guiding principles. Okay, what was important to the Sawdust District plan? From that, and from the advisory board, we came up with developing an exciting mixed-use district, encouraging a pedestrian-oriented environment, capture the eclectic character of the area, and really embrace the waterfront. A little history again. Two main factors drove this plan. The first was the Imagine Oshkosh Plan that identified this as a specific area of interest, and then the development of the Buckstaff property and its denominations arena. We already had one catalyst site that started developing this area, and we wanted to build off of that momentum that had began. So the plan development process, we began from that Imagine Oshkosh Plan. We then developed a stakeholder group. From that stakeholder group, we identified and reviewed past plans, so Imagine Oshkosh, the existing conditions report from Imagine Oshkosh, the city center corridor plans that we did in 2018, the Let's Be Pioneers Riverfront Visioning Workshop and Public Input that was done in 2014, comprehensive plan from 2005 and the update, the Fox River Corridor Plan from 2005, and the Downtown Action Plan from 2000. So we started by reviewing all those previous plans and documents that we had prepared and looking how to move them forward. So then, we began an outreach process with both the stakeholder group and then individual interviews. We sent out mailings to everyone in the area from both property owners and business owners, sat down with a large number of those individuals, and went over some interview questions to start to develop the character of the area. After that point, we moved on to a framework of the plan. What did we want to include? Worked through a number of sessions with our advisory group, and then ultimately moved on to writing the plan. So the stakeholder advisory group met as needed. I would say we probably had about a dozen or so meetings throughout the two-year process. Some of the things they primarily worked on were identifying the project boundary, vision statement, and land uses. Those are some of the main areas that they really focused on. Again, here's just a list of all the plans that were done previously. Those were kind of incorporated as a background analysis into this plan. So the plan is broken down into a number of sections. So we have conceptually visualization on page 11, which is in large kind of what's on the cover there, that's a portion of that. Land use plan, starting on page 13. Transportation on pages 14 through 22. Placemaking, we really wanted to bring a character and an identity to the Sawdust District. That's found starting on page 23. And then functional sub-areas, starting on page 29 to 35. So getting into some of the specific details of the plan, one of the things we really looked at was South Main Street. During our interviews with the stakeholders and advisory group, one thing we heard is "South Main Street and its current configuration is not proactive for businesses. There's no street parking. It's very hard for those businesses to maintain themselves when there's nowhere for people to park." There was also a lot of feel that it was not a pedestrian-friendly and very dangerous area for pedestrians, as the roadway is right uptight to the sidewalk. So we started looking at South Main Street and what can we do? On the top of this image, we basically have the current configuration. It is four travel lanes, two in each direction, travel lanes right up to the sidewalk. And looking at, okay, what could be done? There's some short-term improvement options that could take place, basically using the existing right-of-way within Main Street and reconfiguring it to include on-street parking, one travel lane in each direction, and a center turn lane. Looking at the numbers for the trip generation, it looks like this is a feasible, short-term solution for the area. In long-term, we know there are areas in this corridor, essentially basically South Park, north to about 6th Street, where some right-of-way acquisition could take place along the east side of South Main Street. For example, when we did the arena and the Buckstaff development, the city achieved a wider right-of-way there, that we have that very large terrace, that nice larger sidewalk. Okay, could we continue to work off of that, that larger right-of-way, and in the future, redevelop South Main Street into a more of a traditional downtown Main Street feel? So this bottom image, and we have some around the room as well, shows what could take place if we achieve that larger right-of-way. You could get a nice terrace area planting, still two lanes of travel in each direction with center turn lane, parking, but a wider, more pedestrian-oriented feel. That being said, we know as you go up and down Main Street, there are essentially different sections of the roadway that have different constraints. We know 6th Avenue to 8th Avenue, there's limited ability to gain right-of-way just because, for example, the Brooklyn building is there. Very nice building, full occupancy, likely would stay and wouldn't be redeveloped in the short, in the near future, even the long-term future. So we're probably going to stay with about a 60-foot right-of-way in that area. But as you move from 8th Street south to South Park, that's an area where as redevelopment takes place, the city could look to achieve a larger 80-foot wide right-of-way, being able to add into those wider terraces, little more street planting areas, really beautify that area, almost similar to what you see was done on North Main Street. Then, as we get from South Park down to 17th, that area probably would not have the same Main Street feel, would continue in essence to be that four-lane, two-travel in each direction. So really, the roadway is kind of split into three sections as you go from south to north along Main Street.
Do you have an overview of that in totality?
I don't believe we do. I can highlight it on one of the maps for you if you'd like. So essentially, you have, this section here would be Section 1, where you have the 60-foot right-of-way with Brooklyn building and some of that other in the front. You then have South Park to 8th, which would be basically the arena up to 8th Avenue, where you could achieve that large terrace area, that almost North Main Street kind of feel. And then, South Park to the end of the development area would continue to be that four-lane So placemaking was another thing that the advisory board really focused on, wanting to give this an identity, a character, a feel to the area, similar to what you've seen done, you know, in Milwaukee with some of their districts. So things that could take place to help bring an identity to it, streetscaping improvements, gateway and wayfinding signage, the inclusion of public art. We then have six sub-areas within the district. Although we see this functioning in a kind of cohesive manner, we know there are some different elements that take place with different sections of the Sawdust District. So it's further broken down into six districts. West Transitional Subarea, which is this area to the northwest. Core Subarea, which is that traditional Main Street core. River North, which is the large area along the river, adding south kind of off-the-Main Street feel. Pioneer District, which would be the Pioneer area. Arena Subdistrict, that area immediately surrounding the arena. And then, the South Gateway, that kind of gateway entrance area where no, the pedestrian, or excuse me, the auto-oriented uses may be a little different than some of the pedestrian-oriented uses as you move north. And here's in the map of that area. Each one of those sub-areas then further broken down. We identified key goals to the area. For example, in River North, vacating Pioneer Drive right-of-way along the river. Extending and connecting the Riverwalk to Pioneer Island. Deindustrialization and relocating conflicting land uses. Then talks about desired land use, public parks and open space, potential multifamily, office, and public parking amenities. Then, development and design guidelines, transportation needs of that specific sub-area, and then potential placemaking options for that sub-area. Same rhythm for the entire document, each one of those sub-districts has the same feel. One thing that we worked with on the Subcommittee, the advisory board, excuse me, was a land use table. What types of land uses are appropriate as standalone land uses, which were listed as the permit by right, those that should be a conditional use, and those that should only be permitted as part of a mixed-use development. And then, we did identify some uses that the advisory board felt were not desirable for the area. For example, pawn shops or payday advance-type businesses. They didn't feel they were appropriate for certain areas within this district. Something that was not in the plan, but we did want to include for the kind of groups here today, is a map that shows what the RDA actually currently owns in the area. We were asked to provide that, so we did go ahead and do a map for that. So we own kind of some area around the arena, and then we do own some, we, the RDA does own some property kind of along the north side. Some other development things that are going on in the area. Majority of the Sawdust District does fall within an opportunity zone, which is one of the catalysts that can be used to help redevelop this area. So there's a section kind of on the north part that is not, but a large majority of the district does fall within an opportunity zone. And then, the RDA has, I think, familiar with this plan, the 700 block of west, excuse me, 700 blocks of South Main has had an RFP process and an applicant come in and show some conceptual plans. So we did want to show that beyond just this plan, there is already some redevelopment opportunities that are starting to take place. For example, this is a multifamily development that's looking to take place, like I said, on the 700 block. They're looking at potential some public plaza space out front along South Main, and then development and parking for the facility behind it. So talk a little about our plan adoption process. So we had a public open house on January 29th, had a very good showing. I would think about 30 to 40 individuals came. Joint workshop here tonight. We intend then to take this to Plan Commission next Tuesday on February 18th for formal approval. Following that, we would be looking to go to Common Council for their approval on February 25th, and RDA on March 18th. So some of the next steps, okay, so if this plan gets approved, what are some of the things that city staff is going to start to try to work towards? So one thing would be looking at achieving some of that wider right-of-way along North Main Street as properties redevelop in the area along the east side. Can we get some of that right-of-way to get from the 60 feet to the 80 feet? Obviously, continue to work on redevelopment of Pioneer Island. Continue to work towards improvements for the Riverwalk. Looking for potential development of the RDA-owned properties. And then, extension of 9th Avenue. So I'm going to go to, this is the visualization image that's in the plan. As you can see, one of the things the plan envisions is removal of Pioneer Island, or excuse me, Pioneer Drive along the north side, and the 9th Avenue becoming that connection point into Pioneer Island. So that's one thing that staff feels would be appropriate to continue to work on. To talk a little bit more about this visualization, one thing I want to note is, this plan is not intended, from a visualization standpoint, to tell you exactly what should go where. It's really to show the rhythms and different development patterns that could take place within the district. For example, we show a number of different styles of buildings along South Main Street that could be those multi-use structures. Along the southern portion, we kind of show these three blocks are different ways they could be redeveloped. You could redevelop with a multiple street-facing buildings parking behind. You could have larger street-facing buildings parking behind. You could have kind of end-cap buildings with parking between them, or you could have an end-building with parking on the other side. So we're just kind of showing that there's different rhythms that could take place that would all still fit within the district. And similarly, in like the River North area, we show the different styles of buildings could take place. You could, you know, maybe have a large U-shaped multi-use or multifamily building. You could have separate buildings. So we wanted to show those kind of different types of buildings that could fit within the area. So that's my presentation. Now, we do want to kind of turn it into a Q&amp;A session, thoughts on the plan, things that maybe we need to address yet?
Mark, what kind of timeline are you, your apartment kind of just made at 10:15?
This is a long-range plan. We're hoping that there's some immediate steps we could start to take place. For example, the restriping of South Main Street could be an immediate improvement that we could make, help start to catalyze some parking for improved commercial development. But really, it's a long-range plan. You could be talking 15, 20-plus years. Obviously, if we start to get some catalyst sites, say Pioneer Island hopefully redevelops in the near future, and RFP goes out for maybe some of the RDA in parcel, we get a couple of those sites redeveloping, you could then see it start to build off that a little sooner. Yes?
Two things, two questions. One is, I think we talked a little bit about transit-oriented design as a possibility as well. So when we're talking about the pedestrian-oriented, are we also talking about marrying that with transit-oriented design?
Yes. In the plan, there is some sections about like bus changes and bus stop improvements that could be made. When we looked at the biking facilities, really, we felt it was best to look at more parallel routes than, we only have so much right-of-way on South Main Street to work with, so we felt it was better to include the parking, the wider terraces, and then look at like alternate routes along South Main Street for the bicycle facilities.
Nebraska would be perfect.
That's one that has been identified, and I believe it's currently Nebraska's in the bike pad plan as a route as well.
Is there also trails going to be along the railway there?
Yep. So I guess two things to point out. This plan, right now, conceptually visualizes two trailheads being added to the area. One here at the northeast corner of the district, at the end of the old Pioneer Drive, and then one on some currently RDA-owned property down here on the south side, to help give people some access into the Riverwalk system.
My second question is, I know at one point when we were in some earlier workshops or discussions, I seem to recall a discussion about potential higher-rise stuff on the west side of Main Street in anticipation of what could potentially be, you know, three, four, however many stories across the street, so there's still that water view?
Yeah. We heard quite a bit of conflicting opinions out of the advisory board. Some members felt we should have the tallest buildings along the river to take full advantage of river views, maximizing that potential. We heard some advisory members saying, "Let's keep the height to Main Street and then shorter buildings, so those Main Street buildings can continue to have a view of the river." Right now, the plan really looks at a combination of both, and really looking at what is the highest and best use depending upon the type of development. Other thoughts?
Would you share a little bit of the environmental challenges that any developer's going to face?
Yep. So there's, there's a number of environmental issues out here, both from a geotechnical standpoint. A lot of this area is fill property. So the cost of development is going to go up as they try to develop, especially, for example, the island and some of the area in here. There's also a number of long-term industrial users that we know there's going to be contaminants. For example, the RDA in parcel, right now, we kind of show maybe a cap at a plaza or parkland is the best use for it. We know that's a highly contaminated site. We know in the area of Sadoff, all of those are likely going to be contaminated sites as well, which is going to make redevelopment a little more challenging.
I was impressed by the plan. I mean, it is a conceptual plan and not a detailed plan. One of the things that comes out is there's a heavy emphasis on housing there. I mean, is the assumption that the area will be essentially driven by new residents that need to be brought in?
Well, we see that the area really lends itself to that combination of entertainment, residential, commercial uses, where you're going to need residential to help play off for the commercial uses, the entertainment uses, the office uses, kind of that live-work-play type of development.
That being said, Mark, are you looking at like the west side of the development for that, more or less the apartments, condos?
Yeah. So the east side, we see is potentially could be multifamily condo-type development. You know, there's that opportunity on the island. On the west side, we know there's already some interest in multifamily development. Really, we see a lot of mixed-use options here, especially along Main Street. We would encourage those to be mixed-use type developments with commercial, office-type first floors, residential units above them. Kind of this north river area, we see as being it could be multifamily, it could be large office users. Really, that's going to be driven a lot by what the market would dictate, but we see there's definitely an opportunity for both of those uses in this area.
I want to talk about the multifamily housing in the south. I was a little curious about that.
Yeah. This is an area that we identified, especially along the river, excuse me, along the lakeside. They're very shallow parcels that achieving an appropriate width for office or commercial may be very difficult, but townhouse development, maybe have two or three-story townhouses, could fit in that area. And then, even our long-range conceptual plans from the comprehensive plan, kind of identified this area as a potential area for multifamily housing, whether it be townhomes. Something we heard a lot during this plan and in general, is that right now, the city doesn't have townhomes. There are housing type that is not prevalent in Oshkosh, but there appears to be a very high demand for townhouse-type development. So we wanted to include some townhouse options in this plan to show that that's something that we're hearing. I know Lori keeps wanting to get in, so I'm going to go to Lori first.
Just a single, the SROs too. Would there be potential for SROs? And I'm just kind of looking at the six-point font here, so I can't quite read that.
Sorry.
Get new glasses, I guess.
Right? Yeah, take them off.
Sorry. What type of use are you looking for?
Single, the SROs, the single residential rooms. Single residential occupancy.
Yeah. We see as more of this, as this area would develop, you know, increased redevelopment of the residential area to the west. This is really looking at a higher-density type of development, so single standalone residential units. You know, we do have some stuff in there for like the live-work units, where we want to, where we want to, you know, give an opportunity and prioritize those, but like standalone single-family residential.
No, not single-family residence, more the SRO, so those multifamily that are single, like kind of like, I think there's micro, I think they call them micros or efficiencies or?
Yeah. From a unit standpoint, how they develop, I think we see that there's a need for all types of housing still in the city, whether those micro or efficiency units have development, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom.
Still achieving that density.
Correct. Yeah, we're looking at just that more of that units per acre.
In fact, we're hoping this would actually help attract more of those alternative housing types that we really don't have in Oshkosh right now.
Yeah. One of the things we really identified, for example, during the comprehensive plan update, was that we do lack a variety of housing. So really trying to expand and bringing in some of those newer housing types to the area could be very beneficial.
And this isn't necessarily within this area alone, because you have this area, plus you have the Oregon Street area that you're looking at. Part of what I'm curious about is kind of a two-part question. That area in between with all the residential?
Yep.
Coming off of Nebraska Street towards Oregon and towards Main Street. Are you looking at that in the future of also changing as these neighborhoods change, or are you looking at that staying residential?
We look at that as probably staying residential. In the Imagine Oshkosh Plan, we identify shoulder neighborhoods and how you need to strengthen both our shoulder neighborhoods and the commercial mixed-use areas. We actually had a number of residents attend the public open house from that area, and really want to start a discussion with them about looking at maybe organizing their neighborhood for a neighborhood organization. But no, we feel that you need a strong residential, single-family residential shoulder neighborhood as a component to the overall area.
And on top of that, you're still going to maintain 14th Avenue, so you'll have 9th Avenue and 14th Avenue as your two inroads into the area, correct?
9th and South Park would continue to probably be the two primary. Are you talking into Pioneer Drive?
Pioneer Drive.
Oh, yes. We've had some general discussions, you know, we envisioned 14th staying, you know, could it, could it shift up to South Park? Maybe, but we're definitely going to want two access points.
And seeing, that's where my question would actually intensify on that, because then you've got this area where you're showing right here, you're showing residential disappearing off of Main Street and something being built there.
Correct.
And now, you're going to have, what's going on in Oregon up here, is 14th going to change, you know what I'm saying?
I wouldn't.
Just for that small section, two blocks, not just?
It potentially could. I wouldn't necessarily see full redevelopment of 14th likely happening as part of this plan, but.
And I know that's way down the road.
As you're forward-thinking, it could, and if more traffic.
I literally grew up on those blocks.
Yep. If a lot, you know, if the, whatever the redevelopment of Pioneer Island is very successful and starts to generate a lot of traffic, you could potentially see developers wanting to improve that area. Right now, we still vision it as single-family residential, but that could change in the future.
For me to pass on when I go back and start talking to other people I know.
Yep.
But the closure of Pioneer and shifting that over, that traffic over to 9th, then would Pioneer become that kind of section of Riverwalk?
Yes. So the north side of Pioneer would become Riverwalk and like a linear park area.
Yep.
And then, the Pioneer Drive would kind of circle through off 9th. Yeah, that would be a redevelopment area, primarily first, Riverwalk, and then potentially some linear park-type improvement to the area. Do you have a question?
Well, I don't know if you want to answer this question, but what, there's a lot on the table here, and there must have been a lot more on the table. So what didn't make it into the plan that you would have liked to have seen in the plan?
I think in general, the key elements we wanted to include in the plan, we managed to include. That's why it took about two years of going through this process. What didn't make it into the plan? Off the top of my head, I can't think of something, but I know Alan's got something. We'll go to him.
Do you have the CN Railroad going through that area?
Ah, that's a good one.
A lot more with the buffering and minimizing the impact on traffic, both to be different pedestrian. I'd love to see some kind of overpass that would either go across the top or bury the CN or something like that. But that's something that we've had to work around, and that makes it difficult to really spur the full redevelopment, I think.
Yeah, that's.
That's going to be a challenge for everybody in the future.
That's a really good point. One thing we tried to include to the degree we could is, how do we try to mitigate the railroads impact the best we can? You know, this plan tries to visualize maybe some buffering improvements through, whether it be birmingham or landscaping, but we know it's always going to be impacted in the area. And I guess one thing you said, Alan said, how could we have done even more on that?
I was on that group, and I think one of the challenges is, it's a conceptual plan, but there are some cold, hard facts that get in the way.
Yeah.
You know, the whole Pioneer, if we talked about Pioneer anymore, my head's going to explode. You mean, all the years, you guys have been probably been talking about it, but there are some facts there that make it difficult to do. I think even the street stuff, you talked about it right at the beginning, would be nice to have a consistently sized street with the right-of-ways the way you want them, so you can do the pedestrian-friendly the way you want, all the way down. So those, it's hard to be too conceptual when there are some things that are really, and even the industrial contaminants, well, that's going to impact what you do.
And one of the challenges we had was trying to look at the Main Street corridor and really trying to be visionary and thinking, okay, what's a building that maybe should redevelopment? What's a building we should really encourage to stay?
There's some nice ones, there's some not.
And that was, that was a very difficult conversation from both sides of doing our best to come up with kind of a solution for that. And that's why this is a concept plan, you know? Somebody could definitely come in some of these buildings and say, you know, "I want to turn this into X." And it may be a perfect fit to the area, where we showed it as maybe a redevelopment site. Kind of playing off those market demands in the future is going to be really key.
What about gathering spaces? I mean, obviously, the event space at the arena is there, but did we, do we have that conversation about gathering space? I mean, obviously, restaurants and, where did it go?
So we tried to include a couple of things. We know South Main Street, we want to, and those larger plazas, look at making sure we give ample opportunity for like sidewalk cafes and that stuff. We also tried to identify that we know there's a need for some public gathering spaces with trailheads. This is the area we identify as a park or a plaza that potentially could go somewhere else, but we really wanted to show in the plan that we also need that central plaza space. space. We really felt this area could really do well, for example, like a food truck place. You know, as we start to get more commercial business, or if we got offices, having maybe a plaza where food trucks can go for lunch, cater to some of those employees could be beneficial. Other comments, questions?
Is the city targeting any of the businesses in the area to vacate them or move them in the near future?
I wouldn't say we're targeting businesses. It's more of if they, they want to reach out to the city, say, "Hey, are you willing?" We'd have those discussions, but we're not necessarily targeting saying, you know, "We want this." There's going to have to be a bit of organic redevelopment to this area.
Is the school district on board with you having it as mixed-use for where their building is, where they're repurposing the old Coca-Cola plant?
Yep. We reached out to them during this process, didn't really hear a lot back from them. And again, we're looking at that long-range.
That's an ugly building.
That building as it sits could be the type of building that redevelops into those apartments or something.
Yeah. That's one of the buildings that could definitely go away on that side of town, though.
Other thoughts? We got 12 more minutes.
Trying to mentally go through all the businesses that are on here that you have.
Yes.
Okay, as a kayaker, is there going to be access to the water?
Something we have in the plan is really talking about access to Riverwalk. On the visualization, you can't necessarily see it, but we had a lot of discussions about activating the Riverwalk, you know, could we find a place, for example, a water taxi in this area as it redevelops? But really, we do identify that there is a need to encourage that water activation.
You were going to add a statement to the segmentation for proving that tip for this area, that they emphasized over and over how much of this would be public space and create public park space and public area along the water and whatnot, and so.
You're talking specifically to Pioneer Island?
No, this, this area, but I just, that, your answer right there, that, you know, we think we want to do some public area, but we're not quite sure. And that was really what I thought was one of their main reasons. Look, there's going to be a lot of investment here, but there's going to be a lot of public opportunity.
Ms. Young Rogers.
And I don't, I don't know if that's broken down in here at all, but I can't emphasize enough how important that is to how the Michigan public recreational area is.
Yeah. So, like, for, you know, as you're saying, the Pioneer is presently in a TID district. The arena is, a lot of this, the rest of this area is not presently, but we know like Pioneer Island is substantial public space that needs to be addressed, with the Riverwalk all the way around the site. This peninsula off the island needs to stay public. Achieving some of those trailhead locations for that public access is very important. You need to have that public access and bringing people into the district for it to be successful.
And the linear park.
The linear park as well, yep.
And you said that South Breakwater was also going to remain open for fishing, right, on the south side of the harbor?
This?
Yeah.
I believe the Riverwalk will actually be extended out here as well to improve access Any other thoughts?
I do, I want to say that I thought somewhere in the review process, there was something to the south, south of the Marina area, that was also kind of a sliver of public land.
So, in some of the GIS stuff we showed during the process, all of these parcels stick out into the water? But they, in this visualization, we just show where the actual landmass is, but yeah, when we went through the processes, it does actually show those parcels extending into the river, if, I mean, if that's what you remember.
But I thought they were public, there were some public.
This is that public-owned property here.
Okay, okay.
We're showing this trailhead, that's the public-owned property.
Okay.
It's always been used like a public property. John, you talk about growing up in there. I grew up in there all the time, so.
Yeah, we really wanted to achieve that kind of two-endpoint public access point. That's why with already owning this, this property, and what's taken place with Pioneer Island, really saw that we could put one on both ends to bring people in. Any other thoughts, questions? It's been really good. When I have anything else, we'll, we'll wrap it up then. Again, thank you everyone for coming, we appreciate it. If you do have any thoughts after this, please reach out to staff. All right, thank you.